Members, this session will be from half past four to six. I would like to welcome the secretary and his colleagues. So this is a session on labour issues. Thank you, secretary. Thank you, chairman. Recurrent spending on labour and manpower development in 2015-2016 is estimated to be $1,758 million, an increase of $126 million over the revised estimate last year. As you can see, the labour market was stable in 2014. The atmosphere was quite good. The unemployment rate remained at a low level of 3.3% for eight months. And the number of private sector vacancies received by the Labour Department last year reached a record high of 1.22 million. Hong Kong is facing an aging population, so we need to enhance the employment support services for mature job seekers. In the second half of this year, we're going to extend the employment programme for the middle-aged to part-time jobs. We hope to change the mindset of employers. We hope that they can be encouraged to provide part-time employment opportunities to mature persons. We're also going to strengthen employment support for ethnic minorities. There will be district-based job fairs. And then concerning disabled job seekers, we will enhance the post placement follow-up service for them. And the service period will be extended from three to six months. At the end of this year, we'll organise a large-scale job fair, featuring employment and vacancy information on the mainland. So we hope to be able to provide more opportunities and choices for our young people. We're going to, within this year, review the WITS. But of course, we need some time to update the data. And then the statutory minimum wage. Thanks to members' support, the SMW will be increased to $32.5 per hour from the first of May this year. And many workers will benefit from this revision. And if you disregard inflation, the average monthly employment earnings of the lowest D-South full-time employees in November 2014 to January 2015 rose by 12.7%. And then for young people, under certain employment schemes, their monthly earnings will be increased to $7,150. Labour relations have remained generally stable. The number of claims dropped in 2014, and over 70% of the cases were settled through conciliation. I think the success rate of our conciliation efforts has remained rather high. And then with members' support, statutory maternity leave took effect on the 27th of February, the ninth day of Lunar New Year. We will review the implementation one year afterwards. We need to step up training for our local manpower. We need to unleash the potential and optimise deployment of our local workforce. This is because we have a manpower shortage problem. And so for women, mature job seekers, disabled persons, we're trying to provide more training for them. But then because of this manpower shortage problem, we have to, in some cases, rely on the supplementary labour scheme. So while we have to give priority to the employment of local workers, we also have to supplement the local labour supply. And in the second half of the year, we're going to set up a dedicated recruitment centre for the construction industry. The retail and catering industries recruitment centres have proved to be successful. And so we're going to have a recruitment centre for the construction industry. And then foreign domestic helpers. We're going to enhance the protection of FTHs. We're going to work with council generals in Hong Kong. And we are also going to introduce a code of practice for employment agencies. So we hope to step up the protection of the rights of employers as well as the rights of FTHs. Standard working hours. The standard working hours committee has been working very hard for two years. And in the coming year, the committee will have to provide the government with a report on the way forward. So this report should be available in the first quarter of next year. Occupational safety and health. In fact, this week, there were two incidents. And in fact, we are very concerned. So we need to tackle the problem at its source. There is a need for early intervention. And we need to tackle the systemic risks and deficiencies. Coming to manpower development, the Employees Retraining Board will carry out a survey on how we can attract mature or retired persons to return to the labour market. The VTC also plays a very active role in this regard. And the VTC will continue to upgrade the skills of our workforce. Thank you. Thank you very much, secretary. Four minutes for each member, including replies. Mr Wong Kwok-hang.
Yes, chairman. I would like to refer to Para 18 of the secretary's speech, Wage Offences. We can see that the criminalisation of wage offences has proved to be effective. But then concerning default in wage payment on the part of ATV, this has occurred time and again. And ATV's licence will not be renewed. And so the 600 to 700 staff members of ATV are very concerned about whether ATV will be able to pay their wages. So can I ask the government about its attitude and the follow-up action that it has taken and is going to take? You keep talking about the need to protect the rights of the employees, but then ATV has been turning a blind eye to the legislation. And then second, concerning reinstatement orders. It said that a bill will be tabled in this council within this session. So concerning unlawful and unreasonable dismissal and the reinstatement orders, I would like to know the latest progress.
Yes, thank you, secretary. Yes, I know that members are concerned about what's going to happen to the 600 to 700 staff members of ATV. In fact, this morning, we did some planning. And in the afternoon, the Labour Department launched two hotlines for affected staff. One is on employment prospects, the finding of new jobs. And the second hotline is on labour rights. For example, severance pay and so on and so forth. So the two hotlines are now in operation. And this morning, we met the management of ATV as well as the employees' representatives. And so in the next five days, if the staff want to have a briefing from the Labour Department on employees' rights and benefits, we have told them that we are willing to do so at any time, either at their offices or in government premises. So Labour Department staff will be willing to work during the public holidays. And then, as you know, the ATV operates in Taipu. And so we're going to operate special counters for ATV staff in our Taipu Centre and another centre in the new territories. So the staff can obtain information on training courses available and so on and so forth. And then in the Sha Tin Labour Relations Office, there will also be a dedicated counter to serve ATV staff. So we want to make ATV staff know that the government and the Labour Department are concerned about their rights and benefits. And we will try to safeguard their rights. And we also would like to give them as much information as possible. Now, the conditions in the labour market are quite good. And there are many support-type jobs at the junior level and at the middle-ranking level. And we are willing to provide affected staff with as much information as possible. And concerning enforcement action, we'll take enforcement action in accordance with the law. We've reminded the ATV management that although it will still be operating for 12 months, it must fulfil its obligations as the employer and it must not violate its statutory obligations. And in fact, we've issued 204 summonses. And half of them were in relation to failure to pay wages. Half of them were targeted at one shareholder. And then on the 10th of April, after the holidays, at the Sha Tin Magistracy Court, there will be a pre-trial review. And then there will be a hearing. And we hope that all the cases can be heard on the 10th of April. So we'll step up inspections. We'll maintain a close liaison with the staff. What about reinstatement orders? We'll continue to liaise with the judiciary, chairman. As members are aware, these are very complicated orders involving the sorting out of relevant issues by the courts and the labour tribunal. But after we have completed our work, we will come back to let's go immediately. Mr Tang Karpiu, thank you. We're concerned about the employment situation. It is true that the unemployment rate has remained at a level of 3.3% for some time. But then for the retail sector and the tourism sector, the staff have been crying for help. And many are being prudently pessimistic. And the HSBC PMI has just been published. And many are prudently pessimistic about the prospects in the private sector. It seems that the jobs in the private sector or the labour market in the private sector is shrinking. But the secretary has said that it may not be very difficult for ATV staff to find new jobs. But according to those working in the media sector, they are not so optimistic because ATV are using outdated production technologies. And some of the equipment, in fact, was purchased, say, a decade or two ago. And so I would like to know how the secretary views the future unemployment situation in Hong Kong. And second, how are you going to step up job matching for affected ATV staff? And will you work with the CEDB to see if RTHK can absorb some of the ATV staff? And yesterday, it was said that the Free TV service under PCCW may be willing to absorb some of the ATV staff. Now, in fact, the unemployment rate has remained at 3.3% for quite a long period of time. We are near to full employment. But then the external environment keeps changing. And so we must not be complacent. We have to be prepared for bad times. So we are, in fact, closely monitoring the unemployment situation on a monthly basis. Hong Kong is an open economy. And if there are any changes in the external environment, Hong Kong will be affected. So we have never felt complacent. We are always vigilant. We are monitoring the labour department, labour market very closely. And then second, with regard to ATV, we're concerned about the welfare of the staff.
So we've launched a series of measures to help them. And even during holidays, and if there are inquiries, and we will deal with them. We won't wait till the holiday is over. We know that they are worried. And we are there to help them. As to whether we would encourage other media organisations to take on ATV staff, of course, we would do that. We will ask them to consider ATV staff first. And within the government, we have set up an interdepartmental group. And we will be liaising with the CEDB to deal with transitional matters as well as labour issues. Labour Department has a major role to play, of course. And we will work with other government departments. And for anything, whatever we can do, we will do it. We will ensure that the workers' rights are safeguarded. Nobody can guarantee that they will operate until the 1st of April next year, as what some mainland media reports say. It will wind down within this month. So we should not act too slowly. And we should not wait till 1st of April next year to do job matching. You should be vigilant and you should take the initiative to approach the workers. You should match jobs for them. I don't hear any measures which are very concrete. So can you ask the RTHK to do something? Well, sorry, chairman. Ms Chen Yuen-han. Well, please answer Mr Tang's question. I've been dealt with cases of companies winding down. The labour unions are following up closely on these cases. When the company goes bankrupt, at least if we are doing something now, then the assets will not go to other places, not to the workers. Now, for the protection of wages on insolvency fund, it can help a bit. I would like to share with this secretary my own experience. You should take a more active role. You should not adopt a wait-and-see attitude. There are some 700 employees at stake. What we are concerned most is we should be helping them. How can you help them? I can call up the RTHK. Can we do that? If the government says clearly that RTHK will provide a channel, then you should do something. The ATV staff have been unemployed for many months. So can the government do something more proactive? Second question. You said the standard working hours. You will come up with a report next year. Recently, I have the chance to talk to an employer representative on the committee. He told me that, well, we should not wait. It's not necessary that we should wait till next February, March. We can release a report in the middle of this year. This is a member from the committee. Well, as long as the government is determined, you can do it speedily. It's a matter of whether the government is determined and whether it would drag its feet and wait till next February, March. We would do as much job matching as possible. Well, please, don't take up another member's time to answer another member's question. Well, I've asked him to do that. Well, we are not wasting our time. We've got the hotline set up already. And then we also say that we would be helping you out even during holidays. We want to get information from you and try to match a job for you. And we're more than happy to do that. We would not be acting slowly because we're talking about the loveliness of 600 families. Ms Chan talked about standard working hours. Dr Lung Chi-hong, chairman, has spoken on a number of occasions in the past couple of weeks. The committee has done a lot of work. And the report will be released, not later than the first quarter of next year. While the member said that things can be speeded up, well, the report can be out in the middle of this year. Well, is the speaking speaking on its own capacity or is he speaking on behalf of the whole committee? Well, since the committee member has that view, well, please, don't give me a reply like that. Can you compress the timetable and not wait till next year? Well, we should allow sufficient space and time for the committee to publish a report. If it is done too hastily, it would just be counterproductive. Well, please, try to adopt some reverse thinking, so to speak, in taking matters forward. Don't try to adhere to your own schedule. Or else you will be doing all sorts of harm to the labour sector and everyone in the community. We will try to respect the wishes of the committee. If it says that it can be done within the first quarter of next year, then that would be the case. Of course, I will reflect your views to the committee. What you heard from the member. Can that be done in the middle of this year? I will reflect that to the committee. Dr An Chung.
I would like to follow up on my own question, number 18. I've asked the secretary about the number of occupational accidents in the past couple of years. The construction industry is suffering from a great problem in that area. And the information here shows that there has been an increasing trend in the past three years. In the numbers respectively for 2012, 13, 14 is 3,160, 3,232, and 2,571. And the numbers are alarming. Secretary, do you have information on the age of those injured?
Are more younger workers getting injured? We are very concerned about safety in the construction industry, especially given that there are a number of construction projects going on. For every incident, we will look at them in detail. And we try to see if we can prevent the recurrence of such incidents. Commissioner.
There have been lots more people working in the construction industry. So there is a rise in the absolute numbers of accidents. We attach importance to every incident and the underlying causes. So in our investigation, we would be issuing suspension orders, improvement notices, and we would even take out prosecutions. We liaise closely with the sector. And we liaise closely with the safety officers. For every incident happening, we would notify the workers and we try to prevent similar incidents from recurring. We will increase the manpower to do prosecution. We would also be publicising more among the construction workers, together with the industry associations. Do you have, in the average age of those getting injured, are more young, do more young people get injured? We don't have the information in hand. Please provide the figures later on. Commissioner, I would like you to know this. Well, in the past, many factories had a safety officer. And on a regular basis, the Labour Department would send someone to train them up. And they also take part in courses organised by the LD. I hope that the Labour Department can consider, again, whether the safety officers should be mandated to take courses. Would you consider that? Commissioner. For every construction site with employees over 20, they need to have a safety supervisor. And for those having employees of over 99, they need to have a safety officer. Recently, we have, together with the CIC and the industry, considered strengthening courses for the safety supervisors and safety officers. And the response so far has been very positive. And we will be heading towards that direction. And we want to strengthen the safety on construction sites ASAP. I know that some young people are inexperienced and they are careless. Well, safety officer might have given them a lesson. But then the safety officers are not making the patrol, so that's the case. Ms Emily Lau, in relation to Para 21 of your speaking notes, you talk about the foreign domestic helpers FTHs. Well, the issues involved are complicated, of course. And the secretary, you want to work on the employment agencies, the EAs. But for many FTHs, and actually, before they come to Hong Kong, they are already taken out a big loan. So you have to work on something on that other end as well. Because no employers will want to hire FTHs on loan before they arrive. And they have to repay over a long time, repay the loan over a long time. And some scholars and professional bodies have hosted a roundtable session. And they will be having a meeting later this month. They've invited you to officiate, and you declined the invitation. They want to hold meetings with you, and you declined to meet with them. Secretary, the EAs, or maybe the first app, you said you would also be talking to the council generals in Hong Kong. How can you convince them that they can sort of solve the problems at their original countries? Maybe FTH will take out a loan for tens of thousands of dollars at their home country, and then they have to repay them here for many months. FTHs may have taken out great loans before they come to Hong Kong. So this is happening at the exporting countries, not in Hong Kong. When they arrive in Hong Kong, there may be all sorts of arrangements, like deduction of payment and so on. So the root of the problem is at the source country. So what we can do is to solicit the cooperation from the exporting countries. Well, every country has its own situation. We have to respect that. And for, say, for example, Indonesia, I have talked to the officers at the ministerial level to express our concerns. And we have expressed to the Indonesian authorities and asked them to do something. So it say if an Indonesian maid has to pay a certain training fee before they come to Hong Kong, they may get training in Jakarta or what. And if a training fee is involved, can it be cut to a level as low as possible? And the FTH associations told us that a training fee is reasonable, but it should not be too high. For example, they may receive a training course for six months to learn cooking and Cantonese and so on. So all these courses have to come with a chart. Well, can you join our meeting and talk to us on all these issues? We'll have a next meeting next week, and there will be another meeting in the middle of April. We do have channels to communicate with other channels. Please appreciate the fact that there are so many communities, civil bodies, and we're talking to them regularly. We have a good communication with them. I don't want to talk about individual invitation here because we do receive a lot of invitations, day in, day out. What I want to say is that we are concerned about FTH's interests and also the employers' interests. Well, the employers are very concerned about the situation. Well, complicated issues are involved, and the SARG must take part in all these negotiations. You don't want to talk to us. And all right, once you are finished with the discussions, please talk to them as well.
Mr Pan Siopin, I have several questions for the secretary. If you can't finish answering them all, please write me a paper later on. In your speaking notes, Para 25, it says that this LD would try to prevent accidents at the source. And one of them is talking about enhancing the OSH merit and demerit system. We understand the merit part. For the demerit system, you said that you would provide, submit to the court adequate information for reference in sentencing. So how much information have you provided to the courts? What's the response of the courts? Industrial accidents are very worrying. Well, one or two workers died in an industrial accident. That's number one. Number two, reply 86. The question is about the LD's patrol at work sites, the number of such patrols. Well, you used to have a target. Last year, 5,873 visits. You are now coming with a target of 4,860. There is a difference of 1,000. This is not a limit, this is just a target.
Because you need to have the manpower resource and other resources to achieve the target. And how come the planned target for 2015 And how come the planned target for twenty fifteen um is reduced? And then uh question uh ninety-two asked by uh Mr. Abraham Shaq. And we're talking about the ambassadors for ethnic minorities, employment services ambassadors for ethnic minorities. And some have um successfully completed the on-the-job training. Were they employed by the private sector or by the government? And then, one, two, six. The um BTC's program. Now for the retail sector, um um no, in fact, there were two hundred and ninety places, but then only ten took up the places. So we'd like to know why only three percent of the places were taken up. Um, so I think the commissioner will answer the first three questions and then Mr. Tem can answer the fourth question. Yes, please.
Yes, Chairman, concerning the fourth question. Yes, we understand that there are problems um and the retail sector, so this is a trial scheme. So this trainee ship scheme um is for the retail sector only. This year, we'll look at how we can consolidate these various trainee schemes and how they can be um uh whether they can be merged with other schemes. Commissioner, we have been liaising very closely with the DOJ. When we feel that certain penalties are too light and cannot achieve deterrent effect, we will consult the DOJ to see whether an appeal should be made. In fact, in the past year, we worked very closely with the DOJ. Can I continue? Please um complete the replies as soon as possible. So we can see that um, in fact, um the fines handed down by the courts went up from, say, tens of thousands to hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then the ambassador scheme, ethnic minorities, eleven completed their training. Eight of them were able to get jobs. Most of them got jobs in the private sector. Um, the rest of them um may be finding other jobs or may wish to further their studies. Then uh we decide on a number of inspections based on the manpower resources we have. But I want to say that in the past years, um the inspectors did more inspections than the targeted number of inspections. In fact, it depends really on the operational need. When there is an operational need, we'll talk to the Association of Labor Inspectors. And in fact, in past years, they always overshot the target.
Ms. Helena Wong, thank you. I want to express regret about the bureau and the department on behalf of female employees. Um, I want to follow up on question one, two, four, maternity leave and paternity leave. Um, the UN SEDO Committee in November twenty fourteen, in fact, on the seventh of November twenty fourteen, published some criticisms about the Hong Kong SAR government's third report. Um, according to the report, the fact that in Hong Kong, there are only, there is only a ten-week maternity leave in Hong Kong uh means that it has failed to comply with international standards. I want to know whether the government has reviewed the maternity leave and paternity leave arrangements. Now for paternity leave, there will be a review after a year. Uh, for maternity leave, um it was decided in nineteen eighty-one that there should be ten weeks of maternity leave, but thirty-four years have elapsed. And in fact, the many are saying that three days' maternity leave is not enough. FTU has been criticizing you. So um the period of paternity leave was fixed thirty-four years ago. So how come there is no review in the pipeline? And then in nineteen ninety-five, it was decided that for maternity leave, there could only be um four-fifth of the total pay. In other words, the maternity leave is not a full-pay leave. You are telling me that you have to take into account the um economic development in Hong Kong. Now, people have been asking for a um longer period of paternity leave. People are saying that it should be a full-pay leave. So why is it that you think there is no need to conduct a review at this present moment? Secretary, in fact, in this council, there was a discussion on paternity leave. I told members that for statutory employees' rights, we had to take into account the interests of the employees, the affordability of employers, as well as the economic development and situation of Hong Kong. It's true that we have a ten-week maternity leave in Hong Kong. But then if you look at the International Labour Convention, you um you can see that in fact, um um only two-thirds pay is given, but we are providing for four-fifths. In Hong Kong, we have a lot of SMEs, as members are aware. So we can't have um some drastic increases overnight. Now, Secretary, you keep talking about um the fact that there are many SMEs in Hong Kong. If you ask Tommy Jeung, he will say that in fact, um there shouldn't be um a lot of benefits. SMEs are dying, says the chairman. Um, look at the mainland, look at Taiwan, look at other places. And I'll not compare Hong Kong with um um the Scandinavian countries. In fact, they get one year maternity leave. So you have to rely on the outcome of opinion polls. You shouldn't just ask SMEs. We're told that the government wants to encourage breastfeeding. You want to encourage people to have more children. But then, you know, the maternity leave period is so short. How can there be breastfeeding? Now, in Scandinavian countries, they have a very long maternity um leave period. I want to say that um the bill is shouldered by a social security system. In the US, they do not have maternity leave. In Hong Kong, the cost is borne by the employers. So we have to compare like with like. Different places have their unique circumstances. In Hong Kong, we have to balance the interests of the employers and the interests of the employees. So is it that you're not going to carry out an opinion poll? Is it that you're not going to um carry out a review? In fact, we do review employee benefits from time to time. Um, you can queue up again, Ms. Helena Wong. I, my daughter in the US gave birth to two babies and she didn't have one day of maternity leave. All right, Ms. Priscilla Lam.
Um, yesterday, we were told that ATV licenses would not be renewed. Now, as a fan of ATV, of course, I feel sad. Um, and there are six to seven hundred staff members and their families who will be affected. The staff are attached to the company. They do not want the company to close down. And it is sad to see that ATV has come to such a state because of discord um among the shareholders. Um, in fact, the staff feel very sad. In fact, um the staff um do not want the company to close down. Um, many of the staff members, cameramen, cleaning workers um discharge their duties diligently despite the fact that they didn't know whether they could get their pay. Now, some say that we should ask the RTHK to take up the ATV staff. But can RTHK um take up so many staff members? And um can, you know, there are some who like certain ATV programs on current affairs. So um we don't know what's going to happen to the staff. Maybe all of a sudden, they will all lose their jobs on one day. So can, say, um, the RTHK outsource the production of certain current affairs programs? Of course, the labor department should assist the affected staff. I think um we can have certain RTHK programs that can be broadcast on the ATV channel. And then um the secretary told us that prosecution action was taken, hundreds of summonses were issued, but it seems that the shareholders have not suffered any punishment. I want to say that um, in fact, you can punish ATV as an organization. But then I think Ip Kao Po should not bear the blame. He should not be punished. Um, the staff went through very difficult times. They struggled very hard through the three-month period. And it said that Mr. Ip should be asked to shoulder all the blame. In fact, he is only an employee of ATV. If he had left, who would have tried to ensure that the staff members would be paid? And it seems that Mr. Ip is going to be the scapegoat. So I think sometimes I think our labor legislation is rather ridiculous. And I think Ip will be punished. He will have to shoulder all the blame. So so will you allow the secretary some time to give his reply? Yes, okay.
Chairman, we are concerned about um what's going to happen to the staff. There are six to seven hundred of them. So during the Easter holidays, we will be happy to give the affected staff briefings on employment prospects and opportunities. And in fact, we have a task force. It's an interdepartmental, interbureau task force. And this task force will pay a lot of attention to um the employment of the work, of the staff. Please do not punish the scapegoat. So is it that only Ip Kao Po will be punished? Will the shareholders be punished as well? Now, because I can't comment on this case because there are judicial proceedings going on.
Um, Mr. Chan Pop Chu, I want to follow up on question zero, one, one uh from oh nine, one, oh, um, two, one, three, one, four. The number of participants in the um um youth employment program dropped. But I think um this program, this youth employment and training program can help young people who are genuinely in need of assistance and support. But I think some parts of the YETP really have to be integrated with our existing retraining programs. Uh, we have to offer more diversified programs. And as you know, our retraining centers have established very close links with employers and the YETP has not. So can the YETP and the employees' retraining program be merged? So as to achieve greater cost effectiveness. Thank you.
For YETP, we are moving ahead with the times in the design of the program. That's why there is a decreasing number of trainees. I think this is a good thing. But we have to make transformation now. We do liaise with the ERB and actually we are collaborating on some of the programs. Uh, for every participant, there is pre-work, training, internship, and then on-the-job training. This is a one-stop service. So um youth employment and training program are an integrated whole. There would be a job offered to them. Um, there would be a salary of several thousand dollars and we encourage them to further undertake training. So it's just not, not only about training, but actually getting the participants to get a job in the market. Commissioner. We have some special plans that under YETP, we would be working together with the BTC and ERB and individual employers to come up with something. Uh, craft maintenance, logistics, property management, hair stylist and coffee maker and so on. For all these professions, we are collaborating with these other bodies and there will be special courses like those to help the young people. Our aim is not that the program will end when the courses are finished. In fact, they will be given a job in the labor market and the employers of the YETP program will continue to hire them upon the completion of the courses. There have been many successful examples. I do see the effectiveness of the YETP, but then um there may be some overheads in the program and for ERB, there are also overheads. If the two can merge, then would that, that synergy be achieved? For ERB, um they have lowered the age of the participants. They do have this difficulty, but they will not be providing a lot of counseling services. But for YETP, they do have counseling capability, but they don't have diversified programs. Secretary, I will be using my own four minutes. I would like to talk about two things. First, in the past couple of years, in fact, last year's supplementary labor scheme, under that scheme, um the labor market in the catering industry has been eased a bit. But many peers in my industry ask me to reflect this to you. Whether it should be taken up by the LAB or the immigration department, I don't know. We've come to this stage when we are seeing a lot of applications. Um, say, a Spanish cuisine, investors are applying for import of labor. They are asking for one cook, the seafood, um rice, paella. So, well, one cook is not, or one chef is not enough. And some Indian cuisine of food operators, they want to import Indian chefs. And while there may be some Indian chefs available in Hong Kong, but they don't like Hong Kong kitchens because it's too hot, especially when they are preparing naans, Indian naans. Well, if a local workers can be found, then there is no reason for employers to get imported labor because we're talking about big sums of money have to provide for their living accommodation meals. So, but then we are seeing that they do have difficulties in importing labor under the scheme because you are giving them only one chef and you are not also allowing them to import the waiters and waitresses. Well, even for mainland cuisine brands, they want to import workers just to maintain the kind of service quality they want. Well, even if you've got very good caliber, local workers, they may not have the right culture and the management style to help them and to uphold their brand attributes. Secretary, we know that the sector is shorthanded. You talk about You talk about individual cases, and we will be um making, I mean uh vetting the applications in accordance with the established mechanism. Um, I am more than happy to take back your views to the L A B for the discussion so that they can understand the difficulties encountered by individual sector. Perhaps the commissioner can supplement because he's familiar with the operation of the scheme. When we consider the applications, individual applications, L D staff will actually go down to the applicant, say, in the case of a of an a catering establishment, will go down to the restaurant and look at the scale, the number of tables, the turnover, the patronage. Of course, we'll also take a look at the kitchen. And then also the um advice or opinions of the training organizations. Say, if the relevant training organization tells us that for Indian cuisine or Xinjiang cuisine, there is little training. So after taking into account all these factors, we will decide on the number of workers that can be imported. When we um vet the applications, we will look at the real needs. Um, I recall that some restaurants have imported more than one chefs. Well, we'll have to look at the individual cases as well. Restaurants can also lot an appeal if they want. Miss Lam Kwok Hong, first round. Working hours. That's the first thing that I would like to discuss. Lung Chan Ying said that he will proceed with standard working hours. Now, we are have are having contract working hours instead. Of course, labor sector is very angry. How will you, when will you make remedy? And do real um standard working hours to legislation? Uh how much time do you have left? You you are in the middle of your term of government already. Do you have any plans? Will you do it or not? That's the first thing. Second. Supplementary labor scheme. You are now adopting a new approach. You said that in the past. Well, um well, mostly uh construction workers were imported because we have a lot of construction projects going on. And in the past, you adopted the approach of focusing on a certain uh trades. And you are now. You are allowing the important workers to uh take on another trade in addition to the trade for which he was imported. So can the uh bar bender take on the work of the woodworker as well? So that's the second question. Third question. About statutory minimum wage, S M W. I know that you have a formula to come up with that wage level uh when you first um introduced S M W. Now, say someone works um for eight hours a day. And then you must uh come up with the with the salary that he should get. So you should calculate your wage level based on that. Now, a lot of workers have to do overtime work. And during the Occupy Central movement, a tram driver uh was seen uh crying out for help uh because you were blocking the streets and and I didn't have overtime work pay, so I can't pay for the tuition fee of my son. So it shows that even for a very sizable organization like the Trams Company, the employees had to work overtime to make ends meet. So the fourth question about offsetting M P F, uh offsetting. Um, the chairman has said this many times that he said that when the uh when the M P F was first discussed, you agreed to that arrangement. And now you are in asking for changes. You should seek the consent of the employers now. Now, you can now ask an employer now. Evan. Uh, well, the at the end of the day, the all the M P F contribution would be offsetted. So, I mean, what kind of policy is that? Standard working hours? You talked about referred to the contract working hours. That is a misunderstanding. And Doctor Lang has actually uh clarified at the standard working hours committee, to my understanding, well, I'm not a member of that committee. That's a that's a beginning of an overall framework. That's not the ultimate solution or option. How much time do you have left? Well, so in the next year, there is much work to be done. Standard contracting hours are the provide the basic uh framework. It is just a threshold. It is not the end point. Don't mistake uh don't it for the end point. Imported workers. The Development Bureau and also the L A B um was briefed yesterday. We are not talking about expanding the S L S. We try to refine the program. There are uh twenty-six trades in the um construction sector. And we identify that uh in these twenty-six sectors, um there is a shortage of la- labor. And we have to um bring in additional staff, I mean workers. And employers are involved in these uh public works projects. And before they import workers, they have to um try to hire local workers for four weeks. And say for a project. Uh if if a project A is delayed, then he can um reassign the workers for project A to project B. So there is not in effect an additional number of workers. We try to maximize the use of the labor force. They have to first uh hire, try to hire local workers for four weeks before and to know about before they can bring in um overseas workers. I, this is not an additional time for you to discuss with him. I just want him to finish up with answering your questions. Okay? Minimum wage and also offsetting. Well, you can wait for the next round to get an answer. Second, next one is Miss Chan Yuen Hahn. You are calling, you are on the phone. Do you want to ask a question? Second round, three uh minutes. Sorry, uh chairman. Uh, we discussed ATV. I agree with Mister Tan Karp Yu. Let's not wait till things are already problematic and then do action. We don't know whether the ATV will continue to operate. Um, it may run till next year. We don't know. Well, but what we should focus on is whether they are still shortchanging their staff members or employees. You must act now. And you must uh try to identify organizations who can, which can take on ATV staff. For example, RTHK, the TV section. And also for some other organizations, they can also take on staff. I'm sure the RTHK is willing to take on the ATV staff. Because the government has helped, asked them to help um provide services. Should you be talking to RTHK now? And the RTHK's uh uh staff have told me that, yes, they are in need of um staff. And so should the Commissioner for Labor actively talk to RTHK? This is exactly what we are doing. I think uh we share the same views. First, we try to safeguard the interest of the employees, ensure that they are properly paid. ATV management staff, they said that they are going to uh give out the pay for month, for March. If they can't do it by the seventh of April, then we will uh take follow-up action according to the law. And um when uh we come back to work after the holiday, we will uh visit ATV to ensure that the pay is properly paid.
Uh in fact, yeah, it is uh said that um today they should be able to pay the salaries of the staff. And during this period, if um uh certain staff members are to be um dismissed, then um um everything has to be done in accordance of the law. We won't um tolerate any irregularities. And then concerning the labor situation, have you talked to the RTHK? Because uh uh because the analog surface, now, Miss Chan, we have a task force um comprising our bureau, the C E D B, and other bureaus and departments. And we will um uh look at which um job types are suitable for ATV staff. You mean RTHK posts, um all types of posts which are suitable for for them? Now, because um RTHK is a government department, and RTHK is expanding. Mister Tan Karp Yu, second round, three minutes. Thank you. I wish to follow up on Miss Chan Yuen Hahn's question. And in fact, I wish to follow up on the question I asked uh in the first round. RTHK is a government department. The government is very concerned about the uh what's going to happen to the ATV staff. So will you, during the Easter holidays, um take the initiative to uh contact the six hundred staff members to see um whether they need help and whether they want to remain uh in the broadcasting industry? Ip Kao Po said that consideration might be um given to um the um fast um sale of equipment. Um and so so we don't know how long um ATV uh can can um continue to exist. So um will ATV um secretly uh sell its assets to repay Mister Wang Jung? Because Mister Wang Jung said that he um in fact injected fourteen billion dollars into ATV on a monthly basis. So will you prevent ATV from secretly selling its assets? And will you, during the Easter holidays, contact the staff members of ATV? Chairman, we've got two hotlines in operation. And we have got a set up a dedicated counter for ATV staff at our Shatin and Taipu offices. This morning, we um contacted the staff representatives and also the ATV management. We uh made it very clear that um we um had twenty staff members on standby if um the staff so wish we can provide briefings for them um during the Easter holidays. So do you know uh how many um staff members need your assistance? Um and this morning, we contacted over twenty staff representatives. We uh are still awaiting their response. But in fact, um our um staff members have already um given um the ATV staff our mo- uh their mobile phone numbers. And then um um the sale of assets. Now, we have this task force to make sure that there will be a smooth transition. But I understand that um some um experienced um staff members do have provident funds. So will you make sure that their provident funds will not be um embezzled, so to speak? Uh we will closely monitor the situation. We will not tolerate irregularities. Now, I would just want to remind members that um this session uh should not be for the discussion of individual cases um or um details um concerning individual cases. And in fact, your uh union can always um contact the secretary outside the meeting. Yes, chairman, concerning um question eighteen. Um, we've seen an increase in the number of um industrial accidents in the construction industry. I think the Labor Department should um launch a reward scheme for enterprises and construction sites. Say, for example, if um there is zero accident um uh within a twelve-month period, then there should be certain um rewards. Because we're talking about a few thousand um industrial accidents every year. Many families will be affected by these incidents. Some are young people. They are the sons of um the families. Some are the husbands, the breadwinners. And we do not want to see such tragedies. And then may I refer to paragraph twenty-two of your speech, secretary. And uh this paragraph is about standard working hours. In fact, many unions, especially the F T U and Miss Chan Yuen Hahn of the F T U, um have been fighting very hard for standard working hours. Um, in fact, I know many young people who are lawyers and accountants, and and their working hours are excessively long. They do not get any um compensation in return for their long hours of work. Uh and also in this um building, there are many journalists who are working very long hours. But are many in the business sector, I mean the employers, um are strongly against the idea of standard working hours. So how can we help um employees who are working very long hours on a daily basis? So, secretary. We really hope to provide the best arrangements for the employees. But then if um these can't be worked out, then perhaps the working hours should be specified in the contracts. And if um these employees um um work um overtime, they should be um given pay or um time off in the year. Because I really don't know when we'll be able to see standard working hours implemented in Hong Kong. Yes, um chairman, concerning the first um question. Yes, we have to increase the safety awareness of um construction workers. We have to change the mindset of people in the sector. Miss Emily Lau, second round, three minutes. Yes, chairman, I understand that um the special F C should not be discussing the ATV case. But still, I would like to ask the secretary and his colleagues to help um the affected staff. I understand that they are really uh very worried. And I hope that they will not complain that um they are um denied um assistance by the government. And um now, for F D H, yes, you um um of course um um you have to talk to the employers, the employment agencies. But then I want to say that um the um uh very often the F D Hs um feel rather helpless. Uh they do not know our language. And some um complain to the Immigration Department. And then uh sometimes after they complain, they are asked to leave Hong Kong. So many dare not complain. And and at the same time, some employers also feel very aggrieved. So uh I think there should be a mechanism to deal with disputes between employers and employees. So um will 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 such a mechanism be put in place? Yes, thank you. Um, I send Miss Lau for a question. When F D Hs arrive in Hong Kong for the first time, they are given information at the airport. Such information um is in seven languages. And do they know um your hotline? In fact, they can at any time call our hotline, uh one eight two three. And there is also the Labor Department complaint hotline. Is it the around-the-clock hotline, eight one eight two three? Yes. And then the Labor Department hotline, two seven one seven one um one seven one seven. Uh in fact, it's not um um audio recording. And in fact, we have staff to man the Labor Department hotline. And also, we are liaising very closely with the consulates um in Hong Kong. For um F D Hs we uh who have just arrived, we will um jointly hold talks uh for these um F D Hs with their consulates. It said that if they complain, they will be asked to leave Hong Kong. No, in fact, um we have a conciliation division in the Labor Department. And every year, uh the division deals with over two thousand seven hundred cases um through conciliation. For example, wages in arrears and so on and so forth. How come the unions are not aware of um the availability of such services? Now, we do communicate with um these unions. In fact, we have formal channels to communicate with them. In fact, every year, before the um wage adjustment, we consult the um unions. And um um do you uh talk to them very often? Um at least once a year or sometimes twice a year. And we also consult them on um issues other than wage increases. So we do have formal channels of communicating with the unions. So we do have formal channels of communicating with the unions. All right, Mr. Lung Kwah Hong, second round, three minutes. My turn, Lung Kwah Hong. Are you not Lung Kwah Hong?
Yes, Chairman, I want to talk about standard working hours. You're trying to tell us that without the contract working hours, there can't be legislation on standard working hours. That's not true. Do you know that even if contracts are signed, if the contract terms are against the law, the law prevails over the contract terms? And so if there is legislation, then the contract terms have to comply with the legislation. So it's important that there should be standard working hours legislation. And what compensation will employees get if they work overtime? Leave in the year, time off in the year, or pay in the year? But then you are telling us that we should have contract working hours first.
Now, there isn't much time left. In the first round, you had two questions which had not been answered. So do you want to use up all your three minutes? So I just want to point out that what the secretary has said goes against what the Labor Department has been telling the Hong Kong public all these years. And then have you told the employers that employees are extremely discontented concerning, about the offsetting arrangements? I think he knows. The Standard Working Hours Committee commissioned a consultant to provide some data. And in fact, I made available such data to members at the Manpower Panel. I don't think I need his reply. He is trying to distort the facts. Now, in fact, if there are standard working hours, then there will no longer be a need for contract working hours, right? I believe all the employees will tell you that they want to have standard working hours in place in a year's time. Now, when we do carry our opinion polls, we ask people who you're going to vote for if there is an election tomorrow. And so if you tell people that standard working hours will be available in a year's time, they will not support the idea of having contract working hours. Ms. Priscilla Lung, three minutes.
Yes, Chairman. Now, ATV, Ms. Priscilla Lung, I reminded members about this, and I'm reminding you about this. I want to say that ATV is an individual case. In fact, when you were not in a conference room, some members also followed up on the ATV case. And today, we should be discussing the draft estimates, and we should not be discussing the details of one particular case. Yes, I know. But I think I want to ask about the general situation. Say, if a company has to be wound up and wages are not paid to the employees, then what will happen? I want to know about the legislation. You're going to punish the employee who has chosen to stay. But then if he has decided to leave, then who will be there to guarantee that the other staff members can be paid? So I think, I want to know about the general situation. So is it that you only hold the scapegoat responsible?
Or in dealing with companies which will close down, would you suggest them to stop operation? Because you never know whether there will be further wage defaults. So I think complicated issues are involved. Can the government play a better role here? The one who is responsible is on a salary. Well, if he asks a company to wind up now, then his responsibility can be minimized. But this is not what we are seeing happening here. So, Secretary, would you be helping out in this winding up process? And those who are decelerated, workers would not have to shoulder all the responsibility. And they may even be liable under the law. And the organization can go scot-free. Let me reiterate that there are legal proceedings. Well, I am, well, she's not asking about individual case. She is discussing a general situation. I won't comment on individual cases. So if a company becomes insolvent, so what will we do? If there is a court order, we will act in accordance with the court order. Dr. En Chong, three minutes. I would like to follow up on the reply nineteen. The government has two youth employment resource centers, YERCs. And do you provide service and advisory support on employment for young people? Are you helping them to find a job, match a job for them? Secretary, the center is very welcome by young people. Why, yes, Youth Employment Start. We provide personalized and diversified services. If a young person wants to become self-employed, then we can also help them. And we can also provide a conference room for them to meet with their clients. We provide free services of printing name cards for them. And we hold seminars on specific skills too. And we invite veterans in certain trades to share with them. So this is a platform for young people to start a career. They can try to find a job, they can start up their own business, and they can learn something on job interviews as well. So that's why we call it Youth Employment Start. Why, yes, would you be trying to match jobs for them? We provide personalized service for them. We look at what their interests are. This is provides, this provides high value to added service for them. If it is just a basic job matching, then that can be done by any other ordinary employment centers. But this one is different. Say, if this young person wants to become self-employed, the young person can try to make use of the meeting room to do something, to start up his business. Mr. Lung, you said that this center is called, yes. You missed a punctuation, a question mark, yes, question mark. You sounded, you said this center is very good. Is it really the case? Turning back to the opinion survey, I don't think it's accurate. It's loaded. Perhaps next time, you can conduct a survey, asking people whether they would like to have legislation on standard working hours. And if yes, do you think they still need the contract working hours? And after there is legislation on standard working hours, how can the terms of a contract be improved? They will give you views, say, on how OT pay should be calculated and so on. Well, in your questionnaire, you just asked people, the respondents, whether having contract working hours is better than not having contract working hours. Of course, people will say yes. So who, which is the organization which conducted the survey? There's a great problem with the questions you asked in your survey. Can you show us a sample of your questionnaire? Please, show me the questionnaire, Chairman. And I'll ask you, please, make open the questionnaire so that we can study it. Secretary? The consultant made a full report to the committee. And the committee is now finalizing the report. And after that is done, then that will be taken back to the full committee for consideration. He's asking that in the future survey that you will do, will you be making open the questionnaire? Well, that will be a decision for the committee. Well, of course, I can relay Mr. Lung's views to the committee. Well, Chairman, you asked a very good question. If nobody wishes to ask another question, then we'll take a break. And then we'll resume the meeting at six, ten P M for the next